Good evening, everybody. It's now about 6:33 and I think we can open this meeting. Let's see, now, we have, we had a, the last meeting, unfortunately applicant wasn't present due to a miscommunication, and so, but we did agree prior to an extension to the deadline, and first order of business, I'd like, as a matter of housekeeping, is to make sure that we both sign a piece of paper that reflects that, if there's no objection.
No objection.
Alright, so, I do have a-
To what date did you put it, though? There might be an objection.
Well-
Oh, I'm kidding.
Well, I can put it for today's date, doesn't really matter. But I'll put it for today.
No, the extension. We're extending it just until the end of 2026.
No, not until January 1st.
JK!
January what?
January 5th is the extension date.
Okay.
So anyway, so I'll date it for today, unless you have any objection, alright? And then I'll sign it then, if, you know, whoever the applicant, Mr. Ochitsky, wants to sign it, that would be probably best.
You want to sign it, Peter, or do you want to sign it, Brad?
Or, possibly, either one. So, let me just do that. It's the 19th. Okay, and, um- Thank you very much, Mr. Ochitsky. So, PTHG. Is this thing, the same?
Oh, thank you.
Same number, who's the letter? Which ones are the capitals? Is it P-T-H-G?
I gotcha. Thank you.
Alright, so with that out of the way, alright, we now, as a result of that agreement, we have until January 5th to finish the hearing, and however many further hearing dates it might take to get through the various materials. Now, since our last meeting with the applicant, we've had many submissions, the, we've had a, the traffic study has been done and submitted, and there's, and also, we discussed, we began discussing the stormwater plan at the last, I would say, full hearing, and since then, there have been comments and responses from the applicant's engineer and peer reviewer, and also for the traffic study as well. There's been comments from the traffic study peer reviewer, and the response from their engineering firms. I mean, they're a traffic study firm. And so ultimately, you know, we'd like to get, we'd like to discuss as many of those things as we can tonight. And, so, anyway, in terms of how we'd like to, what we'd like to approach first, you know, I would think, you know, I might suggest that if we start with stormwater, we can continue with stormwater and then go on to traffic unless anyone has an objection. That?
Mr. Chair?
Sure.
I would prefer to start with traffic, since most of that has been, I think, back and forth resolved, and then give us more time to get into the engineering, but that's totally your choice.
I, I think that's, I think that's a reasonable suggestion. Does anyone have any other view? Alright, so let's start with traffic, then. So, we have, we have had the traffic study submitted, and I know there's been several rounds of discussion back and forth between, between your traffic study person, firm, and our peer review firm. Now, is there anyone who would like to make a presentation on that issue?
Uh, Mr.-
Or, how would you like to proceed?
I'd just like to introduce Derek Roach, who is with Viness Associates, and Derek will have a presentation, as the board has not had a presentation yet on the traffic. I thought it'd be a good idea for him to do a presentation, which is not a detailed traffic report itself, but just the presentation of it, and then have, he can go through it, answer any questions, and then go through the peer review. So they've gone back and forth on several issues. So without that, why don't we just have Derek present to the board and to the audience his presentation?
Yeah, I have it on the PowerPoint, on a flash here. I don't know if you guys were sent it earlier or not.
I think they do.
I could take a flash drive and put it in, but I don't know that we received anything.
Okay. That's why I brought it, just in case.
Let's get that, let's get that up.
Should be the old file on there. Where do you usually stand to use that here?
Down by the screen.
Down this way?
There is a podium up there here.
Ooh! Jeez! Uh, just my luck, huh?
I think it's still in order.
I think so, mostly, it looks like it.
Here you go.
Do you want to bring the podium over here, and you can have your papers in front
of it?
This thing over here?
Yeah.
Sure. Let's follow the journey. Alright, so for the record, my name is Derek Roach, Senior Transportation Engineer with Viness Associates. My block, my block. There you go. Yes, so we did the traffic study. We prepared the study in consultation with the town in Masstown, and we performed it in accordance with that. Chuck, guidelines, move to the next slide. Or I guess it's a PDF, so the next page. Uh, ooh.
That one?
This one. Perfect, thank you. The study included a detailed assessment of traffic lines, pedestrian and bicycle accommodations, public transportation services within the study area. The study showed that the result of the project's increase in traffic will result in insignificant impacts on motorist delays of vehicle queuing over the existing or future no-filled conditions. All intersections continue to operate level-of-service C or better with the project, and increases are less than one second of the average delay, and there's no shown material increases in vehicle queuing. We found no safety deficiencies at the study area intersections related to motor vehicle crash history. And we looked at the lines of sites at the proposed driveway, and they were exceed, met or exceeded the recommended minimum distance for safe-site conditions. And as stated, we did get a peer review, we responded to those peer review comments. The peer reviewer responded back saying all of the traffic comments have been resolved, so we should be in accordance with them of the study. Go to the next slide, we'll get to the study area here. So, scroll down a little bit, yeah. So this, scroll down a little bit more. There we go, now we see them all. So we studied the four intersections, the two ramp intersections, the intersection here, and then the intersection south of that. Go to the next slide, just gives us an existing conditions context of sidewalks. They're all unsignaled intersections, it shows you the lane movements and the lane widths. Terrifically exciting. Alright, so getting to more of the meat of the, we did the trip generation.
Can we ask questions through this? I'm sorry.
Oh yeah, absolutely. Please interrupt.
Can we ask questions?
Sure.
The pedestrian traffic, is that part of the traffic study? Or, I mean, with sidewalks, you know, bicycle, handicap access and all that?
So we assess what's out there for bicycle and pedestrian facilities and whatnot, but typically, traffic studies at this level don't go into detail of doing, like, pedestrian level-of-service stuff.
Not, not part of the, it's vehicle traffic?
Yeah, this is, this is mostly deals of vehicle traffic and delays of vehicles and the queuing of vehicles. We do, like I say, we do assess what's out there for pedestrian infrastructure and accommodations, and we talk about that, and then we also provide recommendations for some of that, which we'll get into later.
Okay, thank you.
Did you use a particular number for vehicles per household?
Yeah, so that's the next slide, we get into the trip generation. We did the trip generation based on the Institute of Transportation Engineers. This is the standard practice for transportation studies, using land use code 215, which is for single-family attached housing, which is what these duplex units are. And so that gave us this trip generation here, where we're looking at around 400 trips daily to the site, and peak hour, morning, which is between 7:00 and 9:00, there's an hour in there, that's the peak, and 4:00 to 6:00 is the evening, there's an hour in there, that's the peak. And we're showing between 26 and 32 trips, which is an additional vehicle to the roadway network every two minutes or so, so very minor increases. Go to the next slide. And so then those trips get dispersed across the roadway network like this. We did 60% north on 44, 10% south, 25% on Street Street, to the northwest, and then 5% on High Street. So the impacts of those 26 trips get further dispersed, it's even less as you-
How do you figure out what direction they gotta go when they leave the development?
Yeah, so that's, let me see exactly what we did here, I don't want to misspeak. Yeah, so they did. So they, we used the US Census data for the town of Clinton, which provides journey-to-work data for residents within Clinton, and where they go to work. And so that's how you come up with the dispersion of the trips, based on where they're going to work in the morning, and how they're coming back in the evening. So, we had percentages of the workers in the area that work in all the different towns around here, plus within the zone town, and the ones within the own town get split based on the existing travel patterns, usually of the network that we're looking at.
So did you look at, if some of these people are gonna go to the train station, did you look at whether they're gonna go to Kingston or Halifax? Create more traffic for us if they go to Halifax?
Yeah, so, so, these are all vehicle trips, with the assumption that they're all driving to their work destination. So we did not do a mode split for transportation.
Okay.
That would have further reduced the impacts, there would have been even less.
So did you, so did you factor in the relatively short accessibility to the MBTA stations in Kingston and Halifax in your study?
So, again, we didn't do a mode split distribution, so all of the trips that we're looking at in this are vehicle trips.
Alright, so-
Expecting that they're driving to their actual work location, not going to a transportation-
Okay.
-site. Which is generally the worst-case scenario for your roadway network. Any other questions?
Please go.
Okay. So going to the next slide, we did provide some recommendations for the site access and circulation. Project site driveway will be 24 feet in width, designed to accommodate the largest emergency vehicle. The garage is, where garages are provided, the driveways and residential units will be designed so that the parked vehicles do not extend into the sidewalk areas or the internal roadway. All signs and pavement markings to be installed within the project site will conform to the applicable standards of the METCD. Sidewalks are provided on both sides of the project site driveway, which will connect to the existing sidewalk on Ricket Pond's Drive.
Quick question.
Yeah.
So how many parking spots per unit that aren't supposedly gonna be into the street?
I'm not sure I know how many. How many parking spaces?
Per unit, how many parking spaces per unit?
Per unit? Well, there, there's driveways for each unit, and so, you know, there're two-car garages?
One car.
One car garage, so at least two or three cars per unit.
Two or three cars per unit?
Yeah, on-site, on the lot.
Okay. How does that work? So one would be in the garage, one would be in front of the garage. You're saying two in front of the garage?
Potentially, with a turnaround, yeah.
And these are three-bedroom units, correct?
Well, they're mixes of twos and threes.
Twos and threes, okay. I was just thinking, like, I have two, you know, once you have four people living there and they're all dry, then it's easy that there can be four cars or even more, boyfriends coming over, I don't know, just-
I believe we meet the subdivision standards for parking.
Okay. The subdivision standards, okay. Put out by the state, you mean?
No, the towns, the local subdivision bylaw. And it is tandem parking.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so as I was saying, the, we'll have a sidewalk from our side that connects to the, from both sides of our driveway that'll connect to the existing sidewalk on Ricket Pond's Drive. And all crosswalks and pedestrian crossings will have ADA-compliant wheelchair ramps. Signs and landscaping are features that are installed as part of the project, should be located outside of the lines of sight, or should be designed so that they're short enough that they're not competing lines of sight. And snow accumulations will be removed promptly so as they do not impede signs, lines of sight as well. Go to the next slide, we do have-
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
Yeah. Sorry, go ahead. I'm sorry. Who's gonna, I thought each, each unit has its own homeowners association? Are they gonna be the ones removing the snow? Or who's gonna, because it's not gonna be a public way, correct?
No, there'll be a homeowners association that would manage, each duplex itself will have a condominium onto itself, and there will be, in the budget, there's a two-tier budget. One is for the individual duplex, and then each association or each duplex contributes so much to the maintenance of the common road. That's all included in the condominium slash homeowners association, for maintenance, snow removal, all that sort of thing.
Alright, so essentially, you're envisioning a two-tier structure, where the unit, the owners of the actual building, they have their own condominium union association, but there's an overarching homeowners association that covers the project?
The overall might be an HOA, but it would be another condominium, a master condominium, if you will. So each, there again, each unit contributes to the common expense.
Okay.
Or each duplex building, and then, correct. It's a pretty common situation.
We'll have a turn for questions at the end, right, from the other people?
Oh, yeah.
Well, 'cause somebody asked us a question, I don't know if we need to-
Yes, yes. We can wait.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask one more?
Oh, yeah.
On this slide, if we could go back just one slide, please.
Sure.
Thank you. So I have a question about sidewalks being provided on both sides of the project.
It's on the one side.
That's what I understood. There's actually a waiver request, so-
Correct.
Okay. Does that change your 20-foot-five-four-wide dimension?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, we have, the roadway is, you know, 24-foot wide-
24-foot with, with a cape cover.
-with a driveway on one side and a-
And a sidewalk on the other.
Correct.
So the 24 feet includes the sidewalk.
No, no.
And that's just pavement width?
That's the street width.
Street width, okay.
There's a grass strip and a sidewalk.
And overall, right away, Brad, is 40?
I think that's right.
I think it's 40.
Thank you.
Another question, if I may, with the same respect to the sidewalks. It, yeah, it did say two, but now if there's only one, it's still handicapped, ADA compliant.
Yes. The width is ADA compliant, and then the-
There'll be ramps on each-
The ramps, or AD, the whole thing is ADA compliant.
The side that doesn't have a sidewalk can easily cross the street and get on the ADA compliance side, or is on-
You only have sidewalks on one side. That sidewalk is ADA compliant in all matters.
Okay.
You would not walk on the other side, because there's no, I mean, you could, but there's no sidewalk.
There's no sidewalk.
Correct. There's a, there's a grass area.
So when it comes, exits the condominium block, they'll come into the industrial park.
Correct.
That will be ADA compliant up to-
Well, the industrial park, we're not doing anything there. Whatever the compliance is, it, we're not changing that. At the end, at the end of the commercial, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, there's one sidewalk in the industrial park as well.
And is it compliant?
Yeah, we have to do it ADA compliant, though.
So it looks like, according to your plan here, and I don't want to get too far ahead here, but it does look like it appears to be on the, sidewalks on the southerly side of the road, which seems to extend from the existing one and into the development, if I read this very large map correctly?
Sounds correct.
Alright. Let's, let the gentleman continue.
Just go back down to the next slide, there's only two more. So, yeah. So these are improvements that we're proposing on the Ricket Pond's Drive at Spring Street intersection, relates to the pedestrian ADA compliant stuff that we were just talking about. We're proposing an eight-foot crosswalk across that, for pedestrians across that crossing with ADA-compliant wheelchair ramps on either side, as well as a proposed stoplight on the intersection to more formalize that. And then, we have, the last slide is just transportation demand management measures, which are designed to reduce single occupancy vehicle trips. So a transportation coordinator will be designated for the project, who have other duties and responsibilities to coordinate the elements of the TDO program, which will include providing a welcome packet to new residents, that'll have information on available public transportation service, bicycle and walking alternatives, and other commuter options, as well as the transportation coordinator will facilitate a ride-matching program for residents that are interested in carpooling. Will provide a periodic newsletter in print or electronic form for residents to identify opportunities and available TDA measures, links to state and federal incentive programs for non-single occupancy travel.
I'm sorry, I want to make sure, you said something a minute ago, just, I want to make sure I understand. You know, the intersection between Ricketts Pond and Spring Street, did you say that you would be implementing a stop sign or a stop light?
Stop bar, stop line.
Oh, okay. Is there a stop sign there currently?
It looks like there's also gonna be a stop sign.
Okay.
There's an R1-1 there.
I thought you may have said stop light, in the matter of fact.
Yeah, no, I said stop line. I was reading proposed stop line, but there's also a proposed stop sign. So it'll have both.
Have the Clinton Fire and Police Departments weighed in on this traffic study?
I know that there were comments about turning movement stuff, but that was not my part, so.
Actually, the fire chief signed off. He didn't particularly, to my knowledge, make any comments regarding the traffic report.
The sheet.
What?
Our fire chief is a woman, not a man.
Sorry. I did meet her, actually, at the job site. But, so, that person, she made comments originally regarding our development, but has not made any comments that I'm aware of. That would be up to the board to submit that, for any comments from any departments. But to my knowledge, they haven't. And the fire chief, or the assistant fire chief, was here at a few meetings, and he also made comments regarding the development and the turnaround and that sort of thing. But to my knowledge, he has not made any comments regarding the traffic report. And normally, fire chief would not, but that's totally up to him.
We, we prepared a swept path analysis that was requested at our last meeting. It was submitted, I think, two plan iterations ago. So, and the peer review, traffic peer review engineer requested it as well. So, we did consult with the fire department and got specifications for their aerial ladder truck, which we used in our auto turn analysis. So that sheet should be near the end of the plan set, in what you received about a month ago.
I think I mentioned in my peer review, but which town would respond, since it's through Carver? Would it be Clinton?
That would be between the two fire chiefs to work out, whichever methodology they want to, that's not uncommon for something to be like that, that they would have an agreement between themselves as to who would respond to a fire.
If I may, though, to that point, do we know what the largest piece of fire apparatus is that Carver uses? Because if Carver Fire gets there first, we need to make sure their apparatus can get down.
Yeah, that makes sense, I agree.
Well, we modeled, you did? The Carver apparatus?
I did.
Well, we modeled, the Carver subdivision was permitted, I don't know, four or five years ago, and at the time, we modeled the Carver aerial ladder truck for a swept path analysis. So both cul-de-sacs, the cul-de-sac, the existing cul-de-sac in Carver, as well as the proposed cul-de-sac for this project, are able to accommodate that turning movement. And the cul, by the way, the cul-de-sac diameter, I think, complies with the subdivision rules and regulations, your own subdivision rules and regulations.
So it's very clear at this point that there's no worries about cars parked on the street that could impact fire truck access? No worries at all?
No, it, no, it shouldn't be, it's no different situation than exists anywhere else in town. Yeah.
There again, a fire truck can go wherever they want, so if they have to go around, you know, something that's obstructing their, their path, they can do that. But that's pretty, pretty standard roadway width, yeah.
So, would there be, will there be any vehicles parked on the street or not?
There's no prohibition. On a 24-foot-wide road, there's no prohibition against parking.
There is no prohibition?
No, correct. So they could park.
On both sides, correct?
Typically, yes.
So, and I-
Now, if the board decides to-
When the, when the car is parked, what's gonna be the width of the, of the road?
On both sides.
If there's a car on both sides?
What's a, what's a car? Six feet wide?
Six feet-ish, yeah.
Yeah, so you still have 18 feet, plus the Cape, plus the Cape Cod burms.
Right.
Enough for a fire truck to get by.
So you got, you got 24-foot roadway, and then you have the Cape Cod berm, which is a slanted berm. So you really have 26, roughly, 26 feet for, say, I mean, typically, you and I would not drive on, on the Cape Cod berm, but-
On emergency, right?
But on emergency, it can, there's plenty of road.
But I, I would only expect, maybe for a party or something, for the parking to actually occur on the, on the road. You know, there shouldn't be, on a regular basis, anybody parking inside the road.
They each have their own driveway.
Yeah.
So it's not off-street parking.
Right. But, but I think you might have been about to suggest that we could approach the idea of a condition of enforcing no parking on one side of the street.
If the, if the police chief, for example, made that recommendation to the board, the board certainly can put that in a decision.
What's the recommendation from the chief?
If it, if it makes sense, and it follows kind of your standard procedures for that type of roadway.
If I may, you do have an November 17th email from the fire chief-
Yes, I have.
-talking about fire access, and-
And the point three, it says the travel width of the road shall, shall not be less than 20 feet. If it's assumed that vehicles will be parked on the street, the travel lane will be in addition to a parking lane.
So we have 24, not 20.
Yes, but if you have a car parked there, you take up six feet of that width.
But he also, but he also adds two to the, to the berm.
Correct. But then you go to the fire chief's comment about making sure that the surfaces, they can support the weight of fire apparatus. So whatever the fire apparatus, if they're gonna go around the sidewalk, that's one thing. If they're going around the side of the street that doesn't have a sidewalk, now they're actually-
So essentially, no one can get stuck in the middle, in the middle of the berm as they're trying to go pass by a car parked there.
The fire truck can easily bypass a parked car without traveling off the pavement.
But, but that, but doesn't that, but if you've got 24 feet, and now cut down by a car, you've got 18 feet, he still needs two more feet. The truck, he still wants two more feet.
Yeah.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure, I'm not sure why.
You actually have 26 feet, because you have the berm on each side.
Right.
But I think, but it's-
Your total width is 26 feet, not 24. Look at it that way, from a safety point.
But you've got, but as you say, you've got two feet of berm and 24 feet of pavement. Now, you take the car, that takes up six, so that means you've got 18 feet of pavement plus two feet of berm. If the fire chief is okay with that, then that's not an issue. If he's not, then we gotta revisit. That's all. If he's not, then we've got to revisit. That's all.
That's all I need to say. So we would, we would go along with whatever the board decides regarding comments from the Fire Chief.
Well, with that said, I don't think, I think a 24-foot wide roadway is more than sufficient.
It's wider than most roads in Plymouth.
Yeah. I mean, you're going to have this situation anywhere in town.
Someone has a party at their house on Upland Road. If it's an unsafe condition, the police are going to take a peek at it. People are going to complain. But our road, our road here is going to, is, is, say, wider than Upland Road.
I understand, but you are not talking about Upland Road now, right? Upland Road was built years ago. So, it's not required.
Yeah.
Well, if that's the case, then the town should be putting no parking signs on that whole street?
On which street?
Any street.
Any street.
What's the, what's the sort of roadway width?
Which's required? 26. That's what's in Carver.
Well, if we have no more questions for this gentleman, you know, I'm sure he'd probably like to sit down after standing up the podium for half an hour while we all talk about other things.
It could be two hours of drive here, I don't mind. But, but I will sit down.
Actually, I'm, I'm sorry. There was something I didn't want to talk, talk to you about. But anyway, you can, you can sit down. There's no need.
So I just want to add one thing about the road, what's required in your subdivision regs.
Yeah.
It's 26 feet wide, sidewalks on both, both sides, four feet. But you also, you require vertical or sloped granite, which real, effectively reduces the, the pavement. With 12-inch Cape Cod berm, it's something you can really drive over. So effectively, what you're getting with, what we're proposing is a 24-foot wide paved surface with additional 12 inches on each side. Correct.
And that's, we vouch for that waiver from yours, by the way.
I, I thought I saw in the plan somewhere that one, that there was going to be a sidewalk on one side, one side of the house. Is that correct?
Correct. That's correct.
Now, was, and I thought, again, I thought I saw, you know, I'm not, I'm not an ex-engineer here, but that one side would have concrete, you know, a concrete, a concrete, maybe I, maybe I misread the plan, but as, you know, those concrete-like barriers that actually, you know, come at a right angle to the street and they're, you know, about, about six inches wide and they run, run parallel to the road. Is that, is that correct or did I misread the plan?
I can tell you, what we're proposing is, we're proposing 12-inch Cape Cod, by-tuminous, cannot cement concrete, but by-tuminous concrete, asphalt, berms on each side of the road.
You might have saw concrete, but it's also referred to as by-tuminous concrete.
Yeah, yeah. So we, most people, when they think of concrete, we, we call it cement concrete.
Yeah.
On the plan, but if it's pavement, asphalt, it's by-tuminous concrete. So that's what the plan probably, probably maybe-
Actually, perhaps you could help me out with one I'm trying. You've got the big plan here. What are the, there's these like these tiny lines next, next to these little strips here. What are, what am I looking at? What are we looking at?
Tiny lines.
Yeah, like here and here.
That's the curbing.
Right, that's the curbing. Isn't that the concrete stuff?
That's asphalt curbing.
Okay, so, so that's going to be slope to the road. It's not going to be like-
It's going to be 12 inches wide with a four-inch reveal. So, like gradual.
But on a, but on a right angle, like a con, like a concrete thing that you see on a regular sidewalk.
Be like a ramp.
It's, it's, there's a, there's a slope, there's a slight slope to it.
Outside of several of those four inches.
Yeah. Yeah.
But I was, but I was thinking like, I was imagining, you know, what you see on a normal sidewalk, you see like the, you know, like a, like a lighter concrete, you know, long rectangular thing, and then the road hits there and there's a big right angle and you walk-
I think there's a grass strip between the curb and the sidewalk.
Okay. Right, and this, and these, and these things are on both sides of the street, but the people are only supposed to block on, on one side. Is all that-
Well, if they choose to walk on the sidewalk, yeah.
But, but it looks like only one side of the street is going to have a sidewalk.
Correct.
Okay.
Both sides have the berm.
Okay, let's have this. All right, okay.
And typically, your decision would make reference to that particular plan.
By the way, this is, I think, the third revised plan. We have, we have a bunch of copies in the office. This is the, always, I don't have anything smaller here, we didn't see anything, but are we anticipating further plans at this, at this moment in time?
Who knows? Typically, typically what will happen is that the decision is written and it'll make reference to the plans. And then, there may be something in your decision that would require further information to be added to the plans or things changed to the plans. So after the decision, and we would then submit the form of the final set of plans that your peer review would have to look at to be sure that it conforms to the decision.
All right, and there's a space here on the first page where I assume we write, if we approve this, what, you know, what we, you know, we approve it and sign off on this.
I refer to council. Typically, on a subdivision, you'd have an endorsement of a plan. On a condominium, I've seen it done both ways.
Anyway, so there should be, well, this is a sub, this is a subdivision, so this is a definitive, this is not a definitive subdivision, eventually it will be. But the, the block that should be on at least the subdivision sheet should say the Plimpton Zoning Board of Appeals acting as the planning board under their national-
As opposed to the planning board.
Yes. So if that block is not currently on the lotting plan, I think we have a lotting plan there, which is the one that's to be recorded at the Registry of Deeds. So that block should reflect that the Zoning Board of Appeals is acting as the planning board under Master Law's subdivision controller.
But I think to your question, Ethan, if that's the plan dated, what were they, November 13th? Is that the most recent revised?
Sounds right.
Plan, that's the most recent plan as of tonight.
Correct.
Who knows what the next meeting will bring, but that's the most current set.
Okay, all right, so now, I did have a question for the traffic, traffic person. Now, going in the presentation, you indicated that, that agreement had been reached between you and our peer reviewer. However, I'm not sure, I'm not sure if you may have received this or not because it's been deluged with darkness since Monday. But he did indicate three areas where resolution may still need some work.
Yeah, those are not related to the traffic study.
Okay.
Which is what I was saying. All the traffic study-related questions are resolved.
All right, because he talked, I think what we're, onsite parking and planning, it says number 10, number 12, number 13, pedestrians, cyclists, geographic constraints, cul-de-sac, clarity, I think we were talking about that. So I did want to clarify that with you, that, that there were some, still some, some issues that need to be resolved.
Yeah, they're related to the site plan, not, not the traffic study.
All right, good, so, I'll see we're talking about that anyway.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Chairman, I understand your peer review person is here.
That's what I was told as well.
Yeah, Michael White with Howard Stein-Hudson. I do agree with BAI here that their traffic-related component has all been resolved. All of our comments, we had about 15 comments for them. 12 of them were related to the transportation aspects of their study. All of those comments have been resolved, and the remaining three are just related to site plan and coordination with the Fire Department.
All right, thank you. All right, so you seem to pretty much have been talking about that anyway, mostly about, about site plan issues, so.
The Fire Chief also.
Yeah.
The Fire Chief will also mention that septic tanks, tanks to be rated as H20 to support the weight of the fire apparatus.
Septic tanks? Okay.
Septic tanks.
Well, there, hopefully the fire apparatus is not in the front lawn of-
I'm not a Fire Chief.
Yeah, that does, I'm reading comments, that's all.
They won't be in, they won't be in, under any paved surface anyway, so, but they-
Possibly an ambulance or something like that come up the driveway as well.
H20 is not a problem.
Is, is that in the conceivable emergency that a, a emergency vehicle may drive over where the, the septic tank is located?
If it's in the lawn, no. But if it's on the, it's on the driveway, then possibly, you'd probably make an H20 anyways if it was on the driveway.
Yeah, they won't be on the driveways. Now, the, the locations are shown on the, on the, I think, the utility plan, and they're, they're all in the, basically in the front yards.
Okay, I see them here, right, so, yeah, the tanks are in the front, well, the, the tanks are envisioned to be, in some cases, to be partially under, under the driveways and partially, or those are the leaching fields?
Field, yeah.
This is the tank?
Oh.
That's the leaching, that's not the tank.
Oh, okay. Oh, I, oh, I thought, I thought this was the distribution box and this was the tank, I'm sorry. All right, so, all right, so the leaching field is, is, is out in front of, is partially or fully out in front of the driveways, underneath them.
Well, keep in mind, these plans are preliminary slash conceptual in nature with respect to the individual site designs. So the, the duplexes could be located in slightly different locations and, and each site has to be approved by the Board of Health with respect to the septic design and the wells, well locations and so forth.
Okay.
So there might be some changes.
So you say, so after they come through us, we'd still have to go through the Board of Health?
Well, we would, we would comply, for example, to the, the Board of Health would be the issuing authority for the septic system design and so forth.
For each unit?
So we have to do, we have not-
Each lot, yeah.
It's a question that, that I think came up a little bit. For example, we don't do protests on the entire subdivision at this stage because we have to permit every single lot separately. So we would, we would have to do a protest to comply with, with the Board of Health. And as Rad is designing and so forth, so sometimes the location of that tank might move left, right, front, back, but, but where he's showing is a general area where we're proposing to have a system.
They would also have to submit building permit plot plans for each house as it goes in, and the building spec at that point would look at your decision, make sure that everything complies with the setbacks and everything that were required for the approval.
Okay, well, that's-
And there will be gravity systems?
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Those will be gravity systems?
Yes.
Gravity?
And also regarding the soil testing, the percolation tests, I had made that comment in my review letter, and under a typical, regular, definitive subdivision, they would have to test on each lot to make sure that they comply, preliminary tests at least, and the Board of Health has to review. And that's one of the comments that's still kind of, that's still open.
So the Board of Health, but not necessarily the Planning Board, you're saying, but-
We don't go to the Planning Board.
You don't go to them at all?
When they submit to the Planning Board, they also submit to Board Health.
No, we don't submit to the Planning Board.
If it was, I'm saying, if it was a-
Oh, oh, yes, yes, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, so, speaking of Board of Health, I understand one of its, one or more of its members might be present if, if they would like to say, to speak. I'd like to hear what they have to say.
Sure. Jared Anderson, Vice Chair, Board Health. So our purpose for being here today is to basically inform you guys that we think our bylaws for septic, protect the groundwater, and this design does not. We want to stand by our bylaws and, and that's where we stand. But another reason we're here is the unresolved issue of earth removal. And I don't know if anyone from this group can speak to that.
Sure, I'd be glad to. So we're not asking for any permit for earth removal? The, what-
But you are asking for an exemption from the bylaw, so.
Yeah, but we're not, this is not an earth removal operation. We will, based according to the plans, we would bring in or remove any fill that's necessary in order to build and develop them according to the plans that have been approved.
So.
But what about, you know, but if you, I haven't seen, I haven't been to the site, and that's something we need to talk about before we leave here tonight about a site visit, but, but, but if you drive down Route 44, you can see mounds of sand in that area, in that area. I assume they have to be removed or put the houses there. Is that not so?
That, that's, those are materials that we've hauled in from various job sites, not originating from that property.
Is there a record of where the sites that it came from? Are there bills of lading?
We don't do bill of lading. It's, it's virgin material. You know, if we're building a subdivision in Plymouth and there's surplus sand, we bring it back there. If there's ledge coming off a job that's blasted, we bring it there. And then we screen it, process it, whatever we need to do.
Okay.
But it's all virgin material.
We have PFAS contamination and virgin material in Plimpton. We have groundwater issues resulting from-
PFAS came from a landfill across the street.
Okay, well, we have unknown material.
It's a little further down and across the street, but do you, but there is a PFAS issue in Carver, it's well known.
Unknown material, unknown origin. You know the origin, we do not. And we only have your word that it's clean and your determination of how it became, how it is clean is, it's virgin, it must be clean. Is there, I mean, do you have any data to back that up?
I don't have any data, but easily tested.
Sure. So the, that, that addresses the-
I think that's outside the purview of 40B.
But the pile, the piles, you know, is, is-
Okay, so that, that's, that's the stockpiling, but the earth removal.
There is no removal.
What was the condition of the site when you acquired? Was it vegetated?
No.
It's irrelevant.
Can I continue?
Yeah, sure, go.
So, this is just a Google Earth image from three years ago. Nope, that's upside down. Simple tools, anyone can access.
So, Chairman, I think this is-
Has earth removal happened here?
Say that again?
Would you say earth removal has happened here?
It's irrelevant what happened previously. We're going forward on the 40B, and this is outside of the 40B rules and regulations. So.
It's not germane to the project that's in front of this.
I, I disagree. So I think-
So continue to disagree.
Okay.
We, we, I, I think we're going to agree to disagree. This is, we're, we're asking-
Are you inviting me to continue my disagreement, or?
It's up to the chair.
Okay.
All right, so, anyway. Town Council, I think you might, might need to step in here and advise us on the germane-ness of this presentation.
But there is a waiver request for the earth removal bylaw.
We don't have to.
As part, you don't have to grant any waivers, but it is, but earth removal, the bylaw is cited as one of the waivers that they're seeking a request from. I'm not entirely sure what this is designed to do. I mean, I'm aware that there is a zoning enforcement matter that is underway with respect to earth removal activity on the site. I don't think this forum is supposed to be used as an opportunity to flesh out some of those issues. But to the extent that we're trying to find out, if you're, if you're, look, if you're trying to find out what further earth removal is going to be done.
Let's get the idea.
That warrants the waiver request.
Then it'd be good to know how much.
I can understand some of this.
Well, I, you know-
So, so we have a, they are asking for a waiver for our earth removal?
That has already taken place.
No, because we, we're not, we're asking-
But you just said that there will be no earth removal. I'm confused.
If I, my understanding is that we're asking for that waiver so that if there's any earth that has to be, earth material that has to be removed from the site to allow for the construction of the development, we don't have to go to the, to whoever issues a earth approve, a earth removal permit. It's a pretty standard waiver on almost every subdivision we've been involved in.
So, so if I understand you correctly, right, you know, when, you know, in order to build a subdivision, you're going to have to, you're going to have to put in septic tanks, and that's going to require earth-
Of course. And not only that, but placing of the houses.
All right. So you're taking a foundation, right?
Well, so, for example, some of the land might be high, some of the land might be low. So depending upon where the house is going, we might have to bring some, we might have to fill that lot to allow the foundation, or we may have to remove dirt.
There might be a small export or import. We're not, we have not run the calculations for the-
So like- So, by, so by getting the waiver, it would just make it easier for you guys? You wouldn't have to go before the Board of Selectment?
That's right, and 40B is supposed to be one permit, and that's why we asked for the waiver issued, but we don't, under 40B, we're not required and not supposed to go to any other board. This board issues all permits except for state permits. So, a building permit you would not issue. Title V, we have to comply with Title V.
Which the Board of Health would...
Which is, Board of Health would...
So, why are you asking for a waiver if you are...
If I may.
Yeah, please.
The ZVA issues all local permits that they might need for this project.
Yes.
As they just said, excluding building permits, excluding the septic system permits they need from the Board of Health because that's under Title V. And if there's anything related to the State Wetlands Protection Act, they're still going to go to the Conservation Commission for those. Anything that any board in this town would issue as a permit is included in your comprehensive permit. So, if they need to excavate, to dig for septic systems, to put in a foundation for these duplexes, whatever it is, if they need to remove soil from the site, if they need to bring soil in to backfill and stabilize, if they have other reasons that they just need to move and grade around on the site, anything that might trigger an earth removal permit from the select board, that's a permit that will be granted by this board as part of the comprehensive permit. What they're asking for is a waiver from having to go to the select board to get that separate permit. They're asking you, as part of the comprehensive permit, to grant whatever they might happen to need as part of that earth removal.
But in consideration of that, isn't it, when, in many cases, wouldn't it be generally known, for example, how much they want to remove, how many trips, how many trucks, you know, what sort of equipment they're using, whatever they usually put forward to the Board of Selectment is whatever their requirements are, or just see, you know, the quantities and the times, the dates, et cetera, et cetera. I don't think we have any of that. Is that something we deal with now, or do we take it later on?
In my experience, it varies with the site and varies with the applicant. The 40B regulations allow very preliminary plans, so it's a very low threshold.
So, does it sound like we almost give them a blank check to do?
No, that's what we're not doing. That's where the decision has to be conditioned appropriately. So, you could, for example, nobody's saying you have to grant any or all of these waivers. And at some point, we're going to have a hearing where we just go through the waivers, and you're going to vote as to which ones you're going to approve or deny. But with respect to some of the issues such as earth removal, you might set some conditions that you want the applicant to come back at a certain stage when they know and have a better idea of, okay, how many cubic yards of fill might need to be brought in or might need to leave the site? How many truck trips does that generate each day? There might be certain things like that that we build into the comprehensive permit that because you don't know it right now, they would have to come back with further information in the future. Two years, okay.
But that would necessarily happen after we've granted the comprehensive permit?
Yes.
But we, because we have, it's an exclusion.
Yes. But like, this is where you have to think about conditions. You know, just like you're going to have to, if I may. Just like you're going to have to come back at some point with more final plans. That technically is for the board to review. It's also going to be for our peer reviewer to review, to make sure that everything that's changed on that plan or everything that's shifted is still consistent with your decision. And the peer reviewer is also going to flag for us, okay, here are some things that perhaps have changed, or here are some things that the board still needs to address now that we have the more detail, or now that we have perk tests or whatever. That's going to come back to you, it is not just a one and done.
Can I, I'd like to ask a question if I could. So, we have the co-chair from the Board of Health. From what I understand, I'm not looking at the pictures, but you're showing us pictures of...
So, this is just Google Earth, simple tools that everyone has. 2023. That's the spring, so it's about four acres, and there's a pretty significant cut into the earth beneath it, so...
So, you're saying the current owners of the property have removed?
Quite a bit, and that's just the last three years. If you look back even further, you can see that the entire site, more or less, was vegetated, yes?
Don't answer the question.
Don't answer it.
Yes, it was.
Thank you. So...
So, may I ask, who removed the vegetation? Who removed? Who removed, yeah?
There were some scrub pines on the park.
Excuse me?
Scrub pines, which is, we're not required to get a permit to move that.
Oh, but what about the many cubic yards of earth beneath that?
It's leveled out there, there's no earth removal being done there. I don't know where you're getting your information from.
Well, anyway, but I think we are getting a little far.
Okay, so, let me, can I wrap up where I was going with that?
All right, please.
So, the earth removal is directly related to water quality. If he had asked for an earth removal permit, we would have advised the Board of Selectmen after there was a public comment period that it needs to be conditioned so that we can have environmental oversight, monitoring wells, and he operated without any of those controls. And so, water quality is an issue, and we want some type of assurance. We want to quantify what happened, we want to know how much material was removed, where the water table is now, and if there's any contaminants in it.
All right, thank you.
So, thank you.
Mr. Chairman? To my knowledge, and the point is well taken about some of the material. For example, we have a site in Marshville that's, we're removing 300,000 cubic yards of fill. So, that was very important to the board to know, and we got into all the details as to, you know, the fill coming and truck routes and times. In this particular case, it's pretty much what I refer to as a cut-and-fill balance. So, there's no unusual amount, as far as we know, no unusual amount of fill or large amount of fill that's going to have to come in or go out.
So, essentially, it's like a net balance, so it's been close.
Close, yes.
And what about the existing?
Is that, I have a question, is excluding the material piles that are on site right now that will be removed?
Right, once the stockpile's removed of the material that we've hauled in over the past few years, which will be, we'll remove them every day, we're taking them out of there. So, we'll be back to like a flat site, and like Paul said...
Pretty close to...
You know, now you're just looking at each individual site, whether the foundation goes in a little higher, a little lower. Sometimes you don't, you don't even do that until the day you're digging the foundation. You don't know. Sometimes, you know, it might be a case of how the house looks next door to it because we try to mix them up, move them forward, move them back, move them up, down, just try to give the land a little bit of character, so they're not... We just don't want to go in and flatten the whole site to the same grade and stick every inner house at the same grade. Like, move them up, move them down, so you can't pinpoint exactly. And we don't want to be to the point where we're trying to get an earth removal permit to dig a foundation.
So, there is a grading plan that has been submitted as to how we plan on grading the site. So, it's, there again, we've got several sites where we're removing a lot of fill from sites, and that's a whole separate issue, and this particular case is...
There's a lot, so as Council said, under Chapter 40, Master of Chapter 40B, these plans only need to be preliminary in nature, but what we provided is close to a definitive set of plans. We have roadway profiles, we have proposed grading, we have utility plan. They're pretty close to construction-level set of plans. So...
But there again, we have to come back with a full set of plans that conforms to the decision.
I know, actually, I believe I may have alerted that someone, a member of the public would like to speak. Does anyone wish to speak at this time?
I just have one question. If these were to fail the perk test and we did have to put in raised systems, how much would these plans dramatically change installing pump chambers and raised systems on these leaching fields?
I can comment on that. Groundwater, we've excavated nine deep holes on this site within the limits of the stormwater management systems to confirm the permeability of the soil and the groundwater levels. And seasonal high groundwater was not observed, I think, within 10 feet of the current ground surface. So, there won't be any raised, there won't be any raised systems. And we just permitted and designed six or seven septic systems for the Carver, you know, a few hundred feet away, the Carver subdivision, and there were no raised systems there. And the material on both sites is consistent. It's very coarse sand and gravel, and, you know, as I said, groundwater's down deep enough so that there won't be a mounded system, there won't be any pumped systems.
You may not understand that. You, so, a mounded system is necessary when the groundwater is relatively high because you have to have a separation between the groundwater. So, because the groundwater is so deep, we don't have a raised, we would not have a raised system. I don't know what the separation is.
What was the separation distance roughly? Is it three feet or...
What's required?
What's required? Yeah, what's required, that's what we have to go by, but... It's Title V is five, four or five feet depending on the percolatory.
And that's between the groundwater table and the surface?
Bottom of the system.
Okay.
Yeah.
Bottom of the leaching field, right?
Correct.
Yes?
I had a question about the two-tiered HOA agreement. Is that a document yet, or is that just a concept right now?
Okay. Yeah, that's something typically, in the final decision, there may be some particulars that the board wants to include in the HOA, and we typically would prepare the HOA after a decision to be reviewed by Council.
Okay, thank you.
Is that common, though, to have like two units being in HOA and then all the units being a second HOA?
No, not at all, we're doing that West Bridgewater, Bridgewater, we're doing on...
It is common.
So, it is common?
It is, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's why I was asking if it's common, that's okay.
The only, so this is, the only difference between this subdivision and, say, a single-family home subdivision is that each lot is going to have two units on it, or perhaps in some cases, four. So, in that case, there'll be a condominium association for each lot. Each lot will be its own condominium association. But overarching all of that, as we discussed, there'll be a HOA, homeowners association, which is the same, you know...
So, essentially, if you had, if you were building single-family homes, you wouldn't need any of those individual HOAs?
Correct. Just one HOA.
The whole thing, all right.
So, there'll still be an HOA, but the members of the HOA will be the individual condominium.
All right.
For maintenance, snow removal, all those kinds of things, sorry.
And it's like, at that point, you'd have all the unit owners, they would like to collect five or six members of their lot to address whatever business needs to be dealt with by the whole, or something like that.
Yeah, you'd have trustees and trust, yes. The HOA would have a board, and the representatives on that board are members of the HOA and our individual condo unit owners.
Where is our side? Yes, sir?
Hey, you, Brad Cronin, also with the Board of Health. Just a question also on that two-tiered system. So, the duplex itself will be proposed in that second tier of the HOA. Will that include the land it sits on, or which tier is it proposed that the land and lot sits on?
Sure, the condo, the duplex lot is a condo onto itself. The condominium owns the land, and each owner has a 50% beneficial interest.
And if there's four, then it's 25%.
Yes.
And just one more comment. Obviously, my colleague here kind of showed you the pictures of what's going on on the site. I don't dispute that it's probably level now, but we don't know what was done to it prior to this point, and without any oversight or permitting, we never will. And I would just encourage the board to take that into account when they render their decisions.
Have we ever visited, have you guys visited the site?
We're going to talk about that tonight.
Why don't we actually, I think now is probably a good time, as any...
I think Carolyn was going to say.
Go ahead, if you want to talk about the site, I'll remember my question.
So, anyway, so we have talked in the last meeting that you guys were here about a site visit. And I believe the members of the board would all like to come and visit the site, invite and show. The idea is that if we do this, right, you know, and I understand that, you know, it's not really ready for mass transit, you know, essentially pedestrian traffic, so we wouldn't hold it as a public meeting as such so that the numbers of people who could be there and potential liability issues would be limited. And of course, we would, I guess, go at our risk. Anyway, so, anyway, so I think, you know, I think we'd like to do that by the, you know, by the end of this month, if you people are agreeable to that, that the members of the board can come with, and, you know, we could...
We had a couple other people too, I think, right, that we wanted to come, like Board, was it? Maybe it was Board of Health, I don't know. Doesn't that have somebody coming in with a plan that they wanted to come?
I don't remember.
With Thanksgiving coming up, that might be a little, we have no problem accommodating the board to visit the site. I leave out the Council, whether or not that should be posted or not, if you have more than two people, but... So, we did have a site walk, you know, when we submitted the project eligibility, there are different people attended that particular site walk. There's really not much to see. Right, I mean, you're going to go, when you drive down Rickets Pond Road, you're going to come to basically what is the cul-de-sac? And we're developing on the other side of the cul-de-sac, and you're just going to see some trees. But you're more than welcome to...
It's better to see trees than a piece of paper, I like to visualize things.
Well, I give you a good idea about the existing roadway, you know, and so we're more than willing to accommodate the board.
All right, so I think that would be best, and obviously, if we can't, you know, as you say, Thanksgiving might be a little tight next to peak, but I do want to get it in before we start to have to deal with snow and other rough inclement weather.
So, maybe the week after Thanksgiving?
I'm thinking maybe the first, Thanksgiving is on the 27th, right, so somewhere around, although I won't be here, but you guys can be here, the first, second, or third, something like that.
Yeah, that'll probably be good.
But we want to go in at midnight, too, so...
Yeah, so...
Do they have to post a meeting?
Well, let's finish this off.
You don't.
You don't have...
As long as we don't talk about it.
As long as you don't deliberate, you don't have to post the meeting.
You're basically there to view the existing site conditions and not discuss the project.
Right, we can talk about Thanksgiving or other things, we can't talk about that.
You can even ask, where would the first house begin? Like, help me get my bearings as to where the lots would start to be laid out. You can ask that, but you can't...
But we can't...
Well, even with that, you can't ask them questions either.
No, you say, you can go there with your set of plans, and you can get, literally get your bearings as to, okay, this is the plotted land we're talking about, this is where the lots would begin. Down there would be the cul-de-sac at the furthest end. You can kind of get your sense that way, but no further conversation than that.
Even with them?
With anybody, yeah.
But there again, you're welcome to the site, but there again, you're not going to be able to see where the house is going because it's so deep.
Would you be able to show where the first house would be?
No, I don't think so.
Generally.
Generally, I mean, we could be saying, say, oh, it's about 150 feet over there, or 200 feet over there, that sort of thing. It's not something that's already cleared, and, you know, you can get a good visual.
Well, we have the plans, so I think you probably get a semblance of what it's going to be.
Where that entrance is.
Yeah, where it's likely to begin on the ground, so, yeah, I think we're probably best to do that, and let's see if we can schedule that now, so we don't forget about it.
I just think if you wanted to do like a Saturday morning or something, just so it's light out?
Yeah, that might...
Around 10 o'clock, I don't know about the rest of the board, but...
That might be, that might be best, just as you say, we do want to do it while it's light out, and the days are getting shorter.
Would that be amicable for you guys to do like a Saturday, like a Saturday at 10:00 or something?
Yep, Saturday would be the best.
Okay, so, anyway, so, yeah, I think the 6th, the 29th, that's two days after Thanksgiving, it's a little too ambitious.
I can't make that.
Yeah, it's okay.
Oh, will we talk about the 6th, the 29th?
The 29th.
Okay, then, what about the 6th? The 6th, that's fine. Okay, that's...
For me.
So, you want to do it on Saturday?
Saturday at 6?
Saturday at 6?
No.
The 6th at 8:00.
6:00 AM, it's light out at 6:00 AM, come on. Come on.
Yes.
Yeah, I would just ask with the board and applicant's permission that either the health agent or a rep from the Board of Health also join for the site visit.
I don't think the health agent will be available, but, but.
But if somebody from the board?
Yes.
Because I thought it was the Board of Health or another board, somebody was, I don't know.
I thought, I almost thought it was the fire chief, but I think he already went there.
Yes. The police chief, she was there, the fire chief, there was a representative from the Board of Select. There were about eight or nine people.
Town manager.
Tom Leach, there was quite a few people.
When did this happen? Was it last year?
Last October.
Last October, okay. About a year ago, all right, so. Okay, so most, most of those people are still there, so.
So it's six at 10:00, is that what we're talking about?
That one does have time.
Seven, six.
I'd say 10:00, yeah.
Anyways.
I think that's a good idea.
Yes, 100%, yeah, that'd be great.
Okay. Now, would you have any objection to a member of the Board of Health accompanying us?
Why, why do we have to ask?
What I was asking, that's okay.
No, it's fine.
All right.
Thank you.
It's fine.
Did you have a question?
I did. Howard Randall brought us back. I, I look at this plan, having spent 30 years in this town on Duras boards, how incongruous this whole thing is and how out of character this plan is in terms of what Plimpton is and what it hopes to be. And I would like to just make that point, that nothing here makes sense in terms of how we envisioned it over the past 30 years. And to the applicant, I would tell him his mother would be ashamed, as I told them last time. This is crap. And, you know, I, we didn't talk about how close the well was going to be to the septic system, but we fought for years to recognize that Plimpton has no public water supply. So when one of these fails, who do they come to? The town of Plimpton or will it come back to the applicant for this? And I would also remind you of the kangaroo court that you face beyond this when you go to the state. And that's my last comment. Thank you.
I thought you said you had a question.
I did, I thought, while we have two members of the Board of Health here, you've got.
Which they noticed a meeting for, I believe.
Okay.
Did you, you did notice a meeting?
Yes.
You want a copy of it?
No, thanks.
While, while you have them here, you might want to ask about two key components here. One is that there are going to be wells to service these duplexes. And this board, this board, not the Board of Health, is going to be issuing the well permit as part of your comprehensive permit because there is no state well permit. So they're not going to the Board of Health for well permits. So any input we could get from the Board of Health as to the well permits.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yep, get the Board of Health for a well permit.
You would, but it's a local permit under our regulations, so it's covered under the comprehensive permit.
Well, I don't, I don't think it's any different than, say, the septic system design approval. We still have to go to the Board of Health.
It is different for that because you've got Title V. That needs to be evaluated, but there is no state, there's state guidelines on private wells, but there's no state regulation on private wells. So the well permits technically are going to come through this comprehensive permit process.
But don't we have to prove that it produces so many gallons per minute?
Well, that's an excellent point. You are, you are leading to my thought process here, which is where we're going to have to talk about water quality and capacity for wells and whether we address that now while this hearing is open or whether we have to address that at a later point, just like earth removal and other things, where we would have to condition this and come back at a later date. The other thing is that they are asking for a number of waivers from Chapter 310, the environmental requirements and primarily setback distances that would be, that would apply. They've said they're going to comply with all the Title V setbacks relative to the septic systems, and that's fine, but Plimpton has more stringent requirements than that. It might be helpful while you have Board of Health members present to perhaps ask their thoughts on some of them or get some input if they are willing to provide any to the board.
Do you guys have anything to?
So we had initially recommended a public water supply. The, uh, the applicant has been in touch with the DEP and the DEP sent an initial communication that indicated, according to the, to this plan, it does meet Title V with the exception of the HOA document. They said they would, they couldn't make their final judgment until they had all that information because that's the big linchpin is how is this owned? Is it commonly owned? Is there an HOA? And that will help them decide whether it's, the wells are aggregated or if it's, or if they're all individual.
No.
And that'll affect how it, how it all is designed.
The email from James McLaughlin of DEP indicated that very emphatically that it was not a public water supply. So it is, that was his first, oh, I have it.
We have. And that letter was submitted to the board?
It was submitted.
Both by email and by certified mail?
If it does not constitute a public water supply, which means in, in their opinion, it meets, it meets Title V. And, um, and there was, there was, there was mention, there was mention in it of, of the way we described the form of ownership was, was instrumental in their decision in that each lot would be an individual owner, whether it's one owner or condo association, an individual owner. Because of that individual ownership, as long as they want 25 or more users per well, it does not constitute a public water supply. So we're not even close to 25 users per well. DEP uses two people, two persons per bedroom. And these duplexes are two and three bedroom units, mostly twos. So we're not even close to 25 users per well. And that was the whole, you know, that was, that was, that was the, the whole point of the review that, that DEP got involved. They were concerned that perhaps that there would be more than 25 users per individual well.
The, the concern, just to add a little bit to that, is that the main concern is ownership. So if, if this whole development was going to be a rental development, it would be a public water supply because you have one owner servicing more than 25 people. So even though we would have individual, even though we might have 10 wells, it still would be considered a public water supply because it's owned by one apartment owner.
If we didn't have, if we were proposing this as a, as Paul said, a condominium form of, without lots, individual lots, then it would be, we would need to permit a public water supply because technically there's one owner and that's the big, the larger condominium association. Instead, we have a condominium association for each lot. They're individual owners.
And that's why you're doing it, right? So you don't have to do that.
But no, we're doing it, we're not doing it to avoid.
It's more marketable.
Public water supply. We're just supplying for sale housing. And, and the letter was submitted, is dated, an email November 18th. Do you have that, Mr.?
Yeah, I do. I've seen. My, my format's a little different, but I do have.
We also submitted the certified letter, but we're both email and I don't know why it's two-sided.
Yeah, I think, I think I do, I think I do have that. I think it might just have a different format.
I'm more than welcome to have my copy. I mean, I'm sure.
Can I see that for a moment, please?
Sure.
Yes, I, yeah, I have. I definitely saw this. All right, so, yeah, I, I have it in a slightly different format, but, but I do have.
So it was quite a task to get DEP, because normally they don't like to respond in writing.
Oh, okay.
So here they, it was, it was clear issue and it was an important issue. So Brad, Brad had conversations back and forth and.
Is that what it was?
Any issue though?
Let's see, I think that Monday, I might not have got it till yesterday, so if I didn't, I'll just forward it to you guys.
Yeah, that was just one. I got the other one, but I don't think I got this one, so.
Well, we only submitted one certified mail and the others, it was by email.
Well, it was, I got the fire, I had one, but I didn't get this one, just said no. You can forward it to me. Thank you.
So anyway, so, yeah, we do have, we do have those, you have those letters. Now, I did have a question, I did have a question about, now, for the, for the lots that have, that have, that have two buildings on them, right? That, I, I'm not sure if I see here which are the ones, the two bedrooms and the three bedrooms, but, but for those lots with the two, with the two buildings, that's one, two, four, six, eight, eight bedrooms, I think, if my math is correct, and so.
Two person per, per bedroom, 16.
Okay, so, all right, so you do, so you're assuming, you're assuming two, right?
So it's two or?
We're not assuming two. DEP, that's the, that's the rule they use.
Okay.
So two person per bedroom.
That's their standard. It doesn't happen that way, but that's the standard that they use.
The only, the only concern that Mr. McLaughlin had was for those lots that you're referring to, that have two duplex buildings, if they're all three-bedroom units, that might put us very close to the 25-person threshold. So what I offered in my email to them is that the board could condition in their permit that those buildings be.
Two bedrooms.
Need to be two-bedroom.
Okay.
All two-bedroom units.
That's fine.
Two bedrooms for the two year, for their two houses.
So that's, we're willing to condition that.
All right.
My line, I said two, four people.
When they were here last.
Do you remember this place where I was?
Yeah. Two and a half persons. I had that number written down. That's what they all told us. Now it's down to two.
That's not DEP, it's two.
Yeah, I thought they said two.
Someone had a two and a half.
Yeah, we had a DEP.
Says two.
So good, no less.
Could I just ask a, sorry, clarification question while I'm taking notes on potential conditions? So you're willing to condition that for those lots that have multiple duplexes on it, that they be limited to two bedrooms? Because you've got some that just have two duplexes and then you've got some that have a couple more. So.
Yes, that's fine.
Are we talking about any, any lot where there's more than?
More than one building.
More than one duplex.
More than one, correct.
Limit to two bedrooms.
Correct.
Okay.
We still got back to your question about the wells. About Board of Health input as to conditioning.
For the wells?
Well.
Did you have any more input about the wells?
We have a third party review engineer is working on it. He's, uh, he's indicated to us that, uh, he was concerned about nitrogen loading and he had some other concerns. We're still waiting on more material from them.
Okay.
What's, what's the timeline on all this? Because we're, you know.
They got to January.
Okay.
Yeah, so they, how soon do you think we can get that?
I think we should have something by the next meeting, would you say?
Probably, probably a few weeks.
Because I, because I think we're getting close to the point where we need to consider scheduling the next meeting, so.
Yeah.
We want to take that into consideration.
We're kind of all over the place here, but with respect to the wells and the Title V systems, we have a hydrogeologist that's also preparing, one of Mr. Driscoll's comments was to prepare a hydro geo evaluation or assessment as to the suitability of the soils and how the wells would interact with septic systems. So that's in progress and we anticipate having that done within a week, so.
Really? With next week being Thanksgiving?
This is what he's, he's, he's already started working on it, so.
Yeah.
Now, does that, does that hydro geo involve water testing or, or just, just soil suitability and other such things?
And we have a lot of data available. We have a lot of data available from soil testing that we've done on this site, soil testing that we've done a few hundred feet away in Carver with six septic systems that are in the ground and more than, at least six wells.
Six wells.
Six wells as well. And we have the well testing reports, the logs for those wells that, that will be discussed as part of his evaluation, so.
And then you'd be able to review that, right?
Yeah.
Great.
And probably the Board of Health's man will probably also want to take note of that. All right.
So it sounds like we're going to have two different reports kind of crossing, you know.
Something to think about with your schedule.
Okay, well, I think that, you know, in terms of what I think we can accomplish here tonight, I think we've pretty much gone through the, the most important parts here. There is one, was one other issue that we need to address, but I, I think we might want to look at scheduling, talk about scheduling the next meeting now for probably the second week in December after we've had our site visits, after hopefully the gentleman we've talked about have had a time for a pair of the reports, have seen comments on them. Does that sound reasonable to everybody or does that sound ambitious or too slow?
I mean, so there'll be like three weeks, you're saying maybe the 10?
Yeah.
So do you think within three weeks?
I think that works for us.
And could you guys, would you be able to review? How soon could you get those reports out?
Well, our consultant's saying a week, could be week and a half with the holiday, you know?
Yeah.
I don't know, but I don't, we don't, who is, I mean, we don't know who their consultant is or what their timeline is. So who is, who's your consultant? Who's the board's consultant?
Scott Horsley.
Yeah.
Yeah, forget it.
Why do you say that?
Well, it's, it's their report. If they can submit it to the board, the board can take it under consideration and we're not going to respond to that report.
No, but you're having your own hydro geological assessment done.
Absolutely.
Right.
Which should be done in one week.
Or maybe give it a week and a half.
Fair enough with the holiday, which should then be forwarded to Greg Driscoll.
Immediately.
For review immediately.
We'll submit it to the board. We'll also submit it to Greg. Will submit it to the board, will also submit it to Greg.
Is, is the Board of Health's peer review consultant?
No.
Going to opine on our, our hydro geos' report?
Absolutely.
I think we're going to get some input from Mr. Horsley.
So they, so, I was trying to make sure this is productive, so, and efficient. So is, is Mr. Horsley going to wait until our expert submits his report to file his, so there can be some, a review?
I, I don't think Mr. Horsley is doing a separate report, I think he was looking at the waivers for the Board of Health that were being requested. I think it's still all going to come under Mr. Driscoll and peer review. Now, Mr. Driscoll then reaches out to Scott Horsley to get some, you know, input from Scott Horsley as well, it'll still go through Greg Driscoll.
So does, does, I'm just, so we have?
He's a sub consultant to me.
We have a?
Yeah, as opposed to?
He's what?
Yeah, we're not going to have one doing it.
Who Horsley is?
Yeah.
Okay, so, that was my next question, is the board, the applicant's paying for the traffic peer review and J D's peer review, and you would also expect them to pay for Horsley's peer review?
No, that's the Board of Health.
We're expecting to pay Greg Driscoll's peer review.
But he's just said that?
Greg Driscoll needs a subcontractor, then yes.
Okay.
We might have a problem with that, I don't know.
That wasn't in his proposal.
Hydro geo just came up for the first time tonight, you didn't even mention it.
It should have come, it should have come up a long time ago.
It actually should have, I agree with you, and you just mentioned for the first time tonight that you're going to have a hydro geological.
Only because it was a comment in J D's latest review, a brand new comment.
And that comment was never raised by the board in the past, it's, it's a new climate that sort of comes out of nowhere.
But you're also asking us to waive having the Board of Health involved with checking the?
No, 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 we're asking, we're not, we're asking for?
You're asking us to waive?
Certain requirements of the environmental regulations that come under the board now.
So then if we have to decide whether we're going to waive those things, then we want to make sure we're getting the input from our Board of Health experts.
And again, the well permit is coming through for zoning board.
So it's still going to come through, I think?
Are you trying, I, I'm still confused with the well permit. Are you suggesting that for each lot and each well, that this board is going to issue? The zoning board's going to issue a well permit?
Well, you don't have a public water supply otherwise proposed for this development. So, how does the board look at water, sewer, all of the utilities without considering the wells? Whether they do it now, or like you said, whether there's some conditions that you submit information later and they review it then?
Yeah, I would suggest getting some information from the Board of Health.
That's what we're trying to do.
For example, just talk about the well now, okay, so, and I'm not an expert in wells, but a well is going to produce so many gallons per minute. So if, if that, leave it up to Greg, if, if he thinks that that's a reasonable number,
Through you, Mr. Chairman, administratively?
If I could finish?
No.
One second.
Oh, I can.
Yes, actually, I can finish.
I can finish, and then?
Silence!
Hold on.
Gotten from the well driller.
What part of silence do I not speak, was I unclear? Let the gentleman speak.
And then you can speak.
Thank you. So what I'm suggesting is, if, 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 for example, it's eight gallons per minute is as kind of a standard, and you put that in your decision, then we would have to produce test results from a well driller showing what that rate is, and it's got to be a certain, you know, whatever it is, eight gallons, I don't know if that's a kind of standard numbers, and five, eight gallons per minute, but, but whatever it is. So that would be a standard by which the board, just thinking out loud, by which the board could say, okay, this is our standard, they got the information from the Board of Health. So we would then go to the Board of Health and say, here's the test result from the well driller, and it says eight gallons per minute, issue the permit, no?
Yeah, no, I, I, so, the Board of Health, just like the Conservation Commission will, they'll have to, the Board of Health will decide on what is waived and what isn't, but ultimately, they'll still issue the permit, just like the Conservation Commission will.
Yes, but I disagree with what you said about the Board of Health will waive, no. All the waivers are covered.
I meant, I meant, I meant this board.
Yes.
This board.
The Board of Health is, the Board of Health, I agree, the Board of Health is going to issue the permit. You're not going to go to the Board of Health and have a separate hearing, or whatever their process is, for the grant of a well permit.
All they, all the Board of Health has to do is say, all right, this is in line with what the Z B A and Health held as the exceptions.
Correct, correct. It's no different than needing a permit from D P W, or whatever it is. But it's what information do you need to be able to say this, it meets whatever the minimum standard is, or we want to see a test result that shows X, Y, and Z.
Well, we always have to present test results of the well, we don't have a problem submitting that to the Board of Health, as long as they know that it's got to be six gallons a minute, five minutes, yeah, whatever.
I don't disagree, but we've got to craft a condition, a comprehensive permit, that links the well permit to something.
Correct.
And with all due respect to this board, they don't issue well permits every day. So they need a little assistance.
Sure.
Well, and I think that's part of why, like, when you say twenty-five people for one well, I just service my well, okay? And, and the water guy goes, well, normally wells are for four people. So I don't know where he got that figure, but?
What figure?
I don't know, he said four people per well. So when you said twenty-five, I was like?
No, four people sounds right. Well, there won't be twenty, there won't be?
Two bedroom house, you know, two peo-, you know?
Yeah, two, four people, right, bedroom, but if you have four units, like, how, because you're saying up to twenty-five people, that's what I'm trying to wrap my?
No, no, what we're saying is that?
We're only at sixteen people with that.
Sixteen people.
Right, so, because you got, the building has four bedrooms and two people a bedroom.
Okay, which would be sixteen people for a well.
Uh, is that, what am I?
We're only to produce enough water to service the number of people.
Yeah, and that's what I'm trying to figure out, like, what is the amount that should be? We don't know that, and that's why we want the?
What they were talking about is a public water supply. What they were saying is, is that if, if you are providing well from, that services more than twenty-five people, you have to go through a whole separate permitting of, because that's a public?
Okay, with the state.
Because that's a public water supply.
I see what you're saying.
We're not proposing a public water supply.
Okay, gotcha.
And, and that has to do with ownership. So in the case of our case, if, if this was, there again, an apartment complex, we would be servicing more than twenty-five people.
Right.
So it would have to go through a whole rigid process of public water supply.
Okay.
But where these units are all individually owned, or each, each duplex is owned by?
Would have their own line.
So, so that's not servicing twenty-five people, so therefore, the E P has given in writing that this is not to be considered a public water supply.
Okay, and it just?
That's, that's the, so has, hopefully that helps.
No, that's helpful, thank you.
But, but I think also, just something you just said, not every duplex is having its own well, correct?
Incorrect.
Every duplex has its own well.
No, every duplex?
Every lot has its own.
Every lot has its own well.
A duplex, a duplex is two.
I understand that if you have one well servicing two dwelling units side by side, connected to each other.
Yes, 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 yes.
And, and I think what I just heard was one per unit, and that's?
Well, that's what I was thinking, because if you had two units, four bedrooms, right, so you get two bedrooms in each, two bedrooms in each, then that's eight bedrooms, and so that's sixteen people, right, for the one well. And that's what I was trying to wrap my brain around, because we're servicing our well, we have one well on my property, but I also have a business on my property, so we have more traffic, and my mother lives with us, so we have more movement. So what he had said to me, most wells, wells are made for four people, not, you know?
I'm not sure he's correct.
Well?
And maybe he's not, I'm just saying, that was just a while ago, it was something I heard, but that's where we're at, we don't know well.
The well?
How many bedrooms is your house?
I'm a psychologist, I don't know, I have a concept.
How many bedrooms does your house have?
I'm going to need one.
So we have a four bedroom, so that's technically eight people, right? So four, no, it has been.
But we don't have any four bedrooms, so.
I'm just saying, like?
Yeah.
But that's one well, but if you?
Yeah, so what, so, so we have a, we, so we have, in one of our, one of the duplex buildings?
Yeah.
Okay, would have, if, if it were three bedrooms each side, okay, so that was served, so you got three bedrooms, so that's six.
Twelve people.
Six on the other side, so that's twelve people.
Right.
Now, and that's, that's the standard for one well.
Okay.
And that's okay, it's less than, it's less than twenty-five.
Because I was like, well, and I guess when you have more women and that.
There's a whole separate analysis about?
I'm sure, I'm sure. I'm just, I was just taken back when they said one well for, for up to twenty-five people seemed like a lot. You were going to say something, so?
No, I saw what was said.
Just administratively, when it comes down to it, the only person that may pull the actual well permit in my office is a state certified well driller. And part of their job is to look at the plan, drill the well where it says on the proposed septic plan, and then within a handful of days, they submit what is called a well report. That tells us, stop talking, what I'm talking, that tells us the depth of the well, how many gallons per minute, and the Board of Health also requires a well test of portability, which is drainage ability, and then when we get that result,
Then you would issue?
That's when you know whether it's a good well or a bad one.
And essentially, it is, is this board's job to craft the conditions that, that you have to measure against when you get that report, you look and see, here's the conditions that we have here, here's what the results were, do, are they within the, are they within, you know, the spec, if they are, permit issued, and if not, permit denied.
I would say, we're not asking for waivers for water quality, water volume, anything that would have, anything to do with the report, and asking the board to waive state standards for, you know, water quality, or, you know?
Okay.
So, we're just, what we're looking for is actually, I think we're asking for a few waivers and setbacks to property lines, setbacks to wetlands, setbacks to, to?
So that you wouldn't have to keep coming before us to get the?
So, so when the Board of Health reviews the septic plan, and which has, usually has the well on it, is, you know, they'll understand, you're just, they'll have to take into consideration your decision and what waivers you granted under the local Board of Health regulations.
Okay. That helps.
I think so.
The utility plan shows almost no setback between the leaching field and the well. Well, so perimeter is, is defined somewhere, maybe the Board of Health can help, what is it, a hundred feet?
You're talking state or our, right?
Ours is two hundred feet, I think.
Hundred fifty.
Hundred fifty, okay.
State's a one hundred.
One hundred. Yours is a hundred, okay. So that circle, dotted circle here on the plan shows a hundred foot? That's correct. Setback from the edge of the septic. Okay, comes real close. Now, that's state.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
So anyway, so I think we were, you know, before, you know, before we had that discussion, I think we were talking about scheduling the next hearing, and, but there were still, you know, issues of the hydrogeologists' report, which you say is going to be in about a week and a half to be submitted, and then obviously, that report will, you know, will have some comment from, from Greg Driscoll, or a subcontractor. And obviously, do we, do we, are we still of the, of the suggestion that, that the tenth would be sufficient time to at least have one round of exchange on that, on that?
Hi, thanks, Hope.
Okay, because if, is lying, is, I mean, almost like a, because you say Thanksgiving, so do you think by the third? Like, if the week could get, we know the report's in, but?
We're actually hoping before Thanksgiving, but?
Okay.
That's what he told us, so certainly the third is plenty.
Yeah, and then would that be enough time for you, like, if we just make sure it's in by the third, and then you can review it before the next week?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, so, anyway, so does? You know, so does anyone have an issue with, with holding the next hearing on December tenth at six thirty?
And you plan to discuss the hydro geo exchange on the tenth?
And hopefully by that time, they've had a chance to go back and forth, right?
Yeah, that's what we're hoping, but that sounds good, right?
Our consultant might be out of state, do you, you have a Zoom, are these meetings virtual at all? And is there a component possible?
That's, probably a trifle ambitious for us, but?
I mean, didn't they do it during COVID?
We did, we did do it during COVID, but I think that's one of those skills we sort of acquired in.
Well, you know, we, we can get them on a phone, so, if that, if we need to?
If he's on, so he can at least be on speaker.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Anyway, but I think we, but we'll, well, let me talk to the town administrator and see what is typically, what is typically done, we might be able to commitate him on Zoom.
Do we want to schedule the next hearing, too?
Uh, what next hearing?
Is this, this will be the last hearing?
No, no, not the third.
I just don't know if we want to, or do we need to?
No, I, I don't think, I think we only need to schedule one hearing, then from there, we'll see what we need to do after that.
Okay.
There prob, there will, there will have to be another hearing, because after all, Karen talked about the waiver review.
Yeah.
That's by its, its own, its own animal entirely, so there might need to be, after that, two more meetings between then and the fifth. So maybe one, but probably two.
Yeah, because then we have Christmas, so, just thinking.
Some difficulties.
So New Year's, huh?
New Year's.
Do, do you want to, all everybody's here with their calendar, just look for that next meeting, because?
Because like, even if we could?
It's not much time between now and January.
So do we want to schedule like the following Wednesday, maybe, the seventeenth?
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
So, are we going to, how do you want, like, typically, a hearing would be closed at some point in time, then there's forty days to issue a decision. Sometimes, terms and conditions of a permit is discussed prior to the closing. So I was hoping that would be the case, so that we can give you our two cents worth, and vice versa. So I don't know how, what your plan would be in that regard, talking about the scheduling.
Right, no.
And if you need a couple of days beyond this January?
A couple of days to pull out of forty B here, every decision, sure. Typically, my practice is to coordinate with whoever it is on your team who's reviewing conditions from your side, to go back and forth and make sure we've incorporated either everything you've committed to, or things that department heads have requested, et cetera. Normally, I mean, we've been compiling a list, but until we, I think this is really the first productive meeting we've had, where we start to get to the meat of the matter. So, and I need to know what the decision's going to be on the waivers, and what that's going to guide an awful lot of where this goes.
Can I just say something about the waivers? What we, the waivers that we have requested, usually on our waiver request, we said that the only waivers we really need are those necessary to build the development, and according to the plans that have been approved. And then we try to list everything we possibly can think of, of a waiver that, so if something is missed, so sometimes, and a lot of waivers are administrative?
Oh, I understand, I've gone through all of your waivers, and I'll tell you, I could even share this with you. I agree, some of them are just administrative, or a waiver of a fee, or why should we have to go through the site plan approval process?
Right.
All of which are pretty standard. There are also some where, what exactly are you asking for a waiver from? There is some more detail that is needed on some of them. I'm happy to share that with you, Brad, whoever you think is, makes the most sense on those, to maybe get a little bit more detail, to make sure that we can.
That would be very helpful, if you share that with me, and I'll share that with the whole team.
All right, I am happy to do that, but I guess, getting back to, I prefer to keep the public hearing open while we're kind of going back and forth on the decision. Because if we close the public hearing, and then you've got forty days to deliberate, you might as well have a wall right there. So as you start to work through some of this, and say, well, gee, does this make sense, or should we? What did the Board of Health say about this, what did the fire chief want about that? There's no opportunity to then check with the Board of Health, or check with the fire chief, and confirm if you've closed the public hearing. Similarly, there's no opportunity for the applicant to offer their thoughts on some of the conditions, so?
So do we have to have the conditions set by the time of the end of the public hearing, or does that, could that also income, you know, go into the actual deliberation process?
It, it ultimately becomes, you start to deliberate during the public hear, with the public hearing still open, essentially. So, we're going to have at least the meeting on the tenth. I don't know if there's going to be a need for a few other loose ends to be tied up after the tenth, that they will all have a better sense after that night. I think you then need at least half a meeting, if not a full meeting, to go through the waivers. And then typically, the conditions start to follow from there. Because if you're not going to grant certain waivers, then I've got to figure out how to condition some of those things, or vice versa.
And one of the reasons we like it open is that we've had cases, I don't think we've, regardless who we had the problem with, but we, we had cases where a condition dropped dead from our point of view, we're going to the H I C.
Right, and then it's not?
So I want to be able to tell you that.
And maybe it's something we could have worked out.
Exactly.
But to that point, I'm going to say right now, I don't think January fifth is a realistic date for the close of the public hearing.
We're flexible, we're flexible.
And having a draft decision done, I'm not suggesting anyone wants to, you know, drag this out until the end of twenty twenty-six, but I think we're going to need?
That was a jump.
A little more time than January fifth to get to that point. But that might be something that maybe after the tenth, we have a better sense of where we're headed.
Okay.
But if we could schedule one other hearing where the goal would be at least to go through the waivers, that might be helpful.
So, you know, the next, you know, we have the tenth, and then the next week after that, that's, you know, the seventeenth, I mean, I'm not sure if there's enough time between those two days, but after that, it's Christmas Eve, so that's obviously not possible, and after the thirty-first, so those two dates are pretty much not, non-starters, but there are other dates, it doesn't necessarily have to be a Wednesday.
Yeah, because we could do maybe, because I was even wondering if we, one extra day, could we do the eighteenth?
If the idea is to have, primarily, the purpose of that meeting would be the waivers? Yeah, we should, we should be able to, if, if the tenth, I anticipate the tenth, from my point of view, they'd have enough information to close the hearing, they may, may not, but we don't want to do that, we want to go. So if we had another meeting with the seventeenth, maybe pick up a few odds and ends, or seventeenth, eighteenth, nineteenth, somewhere around there?
Because realistically, I don't think after the seventeenth, I don't think we meet again until after the new year.
Right, so if we could meet the seventeenth, let's just say, and try to work on the waivers and conditions, and then maybe follow it up to, you know, after, after New Year's, and then we may have to give you another week extension, or a two-week extension, or something like that. And it seems to me, things from my point of view are heading in the right direction. So, we want to be able, so a few extra days aren't going to make any difference.
Well, I definitely agree, because I think this has been the most productive meeting we've had, because we've had meetings where? So, do you want to do the seventeenth, how do you guys feel about the seventeenth?
So we've got ten or seventeen?
Both.
Both, so seventeen?
Do we know the time?
Six thirty.
Six thirty on the 10th, and six thirty at 17th?
Does that work for you guys? 10th and the 17th?
Yeah. So 10th and the 17th, is what we're talking about.
Okay, all right, so, all right, so let, so let's do a motion about that, so that the record is clear. All right, so I move that the next hearing to be held in this matter will be on December 10th at, at 6:30, followed by another hearing on December 17th at 6:30. Do I have a second?
A second.
All right, all in favor? Aye. Right, those are the next meeting dates. And I'll make sure that gets, gets out the notice.
Thank you.
Right, now, there is one more thing we have to, we have to discuss before we leave here tonight, namely invoices. Since our peer reviewers have had invoices, and there's, they've been outstanding, and they, they need to get paid. All right, so Mr. Driscoll? All right, I got four invoices here from you. I have five invoices, but I think there's a duplicate. Let's see, let's see, I've got, I'm not sure if the applicant's copies of these, but I could have to give it to.
We, to my knowledge, I've not received any.
I, you know, I do, let's see, I can give you my copies if you like, after I'm done with them, if that'll be helpful. All right, anyway, so, and we also have one invoice from Howard, Howard Hudson. So anyway, so now, I, you know, so, anyway, so Mr. Driscoll needs, you know, these people need to get their invoices approved. And then the way, the way it works is, you know, we, we approve their invoices, I submit it to the town's accountant, along with the warrant, and they, and they, you know, then she issues, she issues the check from the 53G account. Now, as I understand, now, for the reviews, for the invoices I have here, I have five invoices, but I think technically, one's a duplicate. Let's see, Mr. Driscoll had a, let's see, let's see, he was, I believe, given a $5,000 retainer. And that's been exhausted. And I have the other, the other four, the other three invoices that I see here that are not duplicates, come out to, whatever, whatever they come out to. I've got one for 3780, another for 3060, and another for 540. All right, so that's $7,380, and that's also, that does not include the $5,000 that he applied to, to a fourth invoice.
Could you repeat that again? I, I had 3780.
All right, so, all right, so, let's see, okay, so I've got, I got, I got a data, I got 3780, and that's for, that's invoice of 817. And then I've got, then I've got the next invoice of 30, 3060, and that's for October 1st.
Thirty, okay.
$3,060.
Yep.
And I got, and I got the other, final invoice of 111, and that's $540.
How much?
$540.
Oh.
And also, there was, also, there was a fourth invoice dated for 9, for 9/1, that, that totaled to $5,000. But that was taken care of by the retain, the retain that was paid to him.
What's the total?
So, the total, that's, Mr. Driscoll, without putting out the invoices, is 30, 73.
7380?
Yeah.
So my understanding is that I think, what was, put in 15?
15, it was 15,000.
15,000.
15,000, and we have not received any of the invoices for the $5,000 that you said was exhausted.
I got, I got, I got them here, I'll give them to you before you leave.
Okay, just send them in the mail, or whether you want to do that, or by email.
All right, and also, we have one invoice here from Howard Stein Hudson, November, oh, sorry, that's the date. October 30th for 1915. I'm not sure if I sent, I'm not sure if I sent these to you guys or not, I mean.
You did.
Okay, good.
So that leaves a balance of about, oh.
$695 is what's left in the 53G account. Once you take out, you know, you started with 15, you already, we gave.
You got 7380 plus 1950, those two.
1915.
I'm sorry?
15, 1915, 1915, 1915.
Okay. So that's nine. So, how much more money would you want to be putting into the 53G account?
That's, well, that's the question that I think.
Well, I don't know how many more, I mean, I think traffic is done.
Are we getting a proposal for the hydro geo?
Well, that's, I think that's on the Board of Health docket. Yeah, but that's, we're not asking for that, he's not asking for it. So that's something the Board of Health come up on their own, so they should pay their own.
We're not. We're asking for it. We're asking for it.
So we're.
That's what we're trying to explain to you, we don't know wells.
Yeah, but he's, they're going off on, I already know what that report, I already know what that report is going to say without even seeing it.
They're not doing a report, we're asking.
They're going to be doing a report, they're getting it. I don't know.
We're asking for the.
To be period viewed. So I guess I would ask Brad what he thinks the appropriate amount would be for.
What do you think?
Okay, I'll get the number.
So essentially, we have $695 left in the, plus however much, you know, you feel that would be necessary to complete, you know, you know, the peer review that's, you know, the peer review that's contemplated by you and your subcontractor.
Okay.
Um, so, I mean, so I would think, if you get us that number.
Yeah, I was going to say, can you email it?
Yes, and then we will forward along to, to the applicant, along with, along with the, you know, with the invoices that would be approved tonight. All right, so, anyway, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I think there's a conflict of interest with closely, with.
Could you explain?
I think there's a conflict of interest.
I heard you.
Okay, and, and my understanding is that they're involved on a lawsuit regarding one of the lots.
No, just, or they move a permit for the Town of Carver.
So they already have a bias regarding the boarding property.
Who are they representing in the Carver matter?
They were retained by an intervention group to.
Save the Pine Barrens?
Save the Pine Barrens.
Yep.
So they're not working for the Town of Carver, and they're not working for, for your company.
Because I've already shown bias against the project.
No, but I'm not asking for bias, I'm asking, they haven't done any work for your company, and they haven't done any work for the Town of Carver.
No, right.
Horstley?
I don't know about Horstley, but the, the Pine Barrens hired him.
They're, they're a private group.
We would object, period. They want to get somebody else, get somebody else.
Well, I think the only basis you have to object is if there's an actual conflict.
I think there is a conflict, I'm sorry.
You might think that, but they're not representing, they're not representing the Town of Plington. They're not representing your entity.
Would, would it be, I'm not sure I would see the conflict if they were representing the Town of Carver even.
That's what I'm saying.
That's what she's saying.
I'm just, I, you know.
We have two lawyers here, right?
Yeah, I.
Probably more.
I don't see that it's a conflict with this project. But it's, whatever the.
And we can, we of course can, can note the applicant's objection, objection for the record. But I think, as you've pointed out many times, obviously, our decision is to who to hire. And if there is such bias in the report, then obviously, then that'll be, then they can, that'll be the record if they need.
Also, just look at their history. Of all developments they've been involved in, look at their history.
Yes, ma'am, would you like to start?
Yeah, Sammy Coronan, citizen of Plington. I'm a little concerned that, that these guys keep interrupting everybody, and they aren't being recognized by the chair before speaking. And I'm also, as a citizen, a little concerned that before it was even really discussed, they're like, oh, we know what this is going to say. And they're concerned about a third-party review. And I'm on the Conservation Commission, and we have third-party reviews all the time. And I think that's so standard. And the fact that they're nervous about a third-party reviewer, that's concerning to me as a citizen.
I think they just want to save money, that's, that's all it is, right?
No, no.
And we want to protect our town.
So if it's not about protecting money, what is it? What's your objection?
It's, it's, it's a bias, really, because it was, he was an expert witness in a lawsuit.
The same. But that's not.
Welcome to be in the third-party reviewer.
I mean, so.
Is that.
So why would the Board of Health object to hiring somebody else?
If, if there will be conflict of interest, we will hire somebody else.
Well, it's not, you're not hiring, they're hiring.
Yes.
But.
Well, they're not hiring, he is, do you know?
He doesn't, he didn't even know about it until, until they raised the issue. So how can he, how can Scott, how can he be involved when he didn't even know about it?
What I was going to ask him if he knew of any.
Sorry. Oh, of another company?
Well, I didn't know, if maybe he knew of somebody else. And we need somebody who can do it in a week, you know, I mean.
A little more.
So trying to hire somebody else, it could be an issue on our end, as far as finding.
Yes, because I felt, remember how long, you know, what we had to do to get the current peer reviewers. It was not a, a process that happened overnight.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I mean, I mean, ultimately, we must, you know, if there is going to be hydrogeology expert, there will have to be, you know, someone to be, to be a peer review for that person and who it is, since the board's, you know, the board gets to determine, gets to determine that absent a conflict of interest. And right now, it does appear that Mr. Horstley is the, is a person who's available and willing to do this work in the timeframe that we have. I don't see, I don't see another option, I don't see another option at this, at this time. So ultimately, you know, I would suggest that. Do, should I make, should I make a motion, uh, town council about actually appointing somebody for this peer review?
You can certainly do that, or you can delegate that to go through your current peer review through Drake, Greg Driscoll. He can bring in whoever he feels needs as a subcontractor with expertise.
Well, that doesn't mean a motion, then.
Right.
And all.
Correct.
Because he's already, he is our, he is already our peer review, and he has, you know, he has raised, he has raised the issue, and thinks that he needs technical assistance, he can seek whoever he wishes. All right, so I guess, I guess we need to approve these invoices, so that Mr. Driscoll and Howard Stein can get paid. And then we will, and then he can get us an estimate for what we'll need further for that peer review that we're talking about. That'd be great. So, now, does any, now, does anyone have a question about the actual invoices before I make the motion? All right, having, having, I see, all right, so I, so I would, I would move that we approve these invoices as submitted with the amounts I've previously mentioned, and, and do I have a second on that?
Okay.
All right, all in favor? All right, well, at that, at that point, if there is no further business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah? Nope, hold on. Let me speak.
I, I don't know what the decision was regarding Horstley, what.
About what?
The period, the ongoing.
We're leaving it with our.
Yes.
Okay.
We're leaving it with him to decide.
Okay.
Yes, we, yes, we've made no, we've made no motion to, so essentially, we've, we relate to the faulty position, that'll be Mr. Driscoll's. Discretion, who he wishes to retain on the, on the mission. All right, so with that, with that clarified, if there's no further business, then I would entertain a motion.
One other thing, the 53G account, so I, so I assume you want us to put some money into that account?
I think Greg said he'd provide a figure.
So for now.
He's done these invoices, I.
Well, no, you've got enough to cover the invoices.
Yeah, well, just, just barely. So within the next few days, we'll deposit $5,000 into the 53G account, for now.
Is the applicant going to see a proposal with a scope of work for this?
Yeah, I'll get that.
All right, that'd be $500. All right, so $5,000, I think, would be, is that, great, does that seem reasonable to you?
Yeah.
All right.
They can apply it to the end.
That, that we most appreciate. All right, so.
That's kind of how it goes.
Let's see, all right, so, all right, with, with all that, you know, settled away, there's no other business that we need to address here tonight, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn and adjourn to December 10th, which is our next meeting.
So moved.
Okay, all right, I, I have a motion, and I'll, and I'll second it, so all in favor? All right, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.